If you've pre-voted.
Word names seem a bit abstract.
It does.
So I can understand why not the day of. You don't want to count ahead of time.
But again, that doesn't stop everyone from more staff to vote. Anyway, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Is there any additional items? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Somebody wish to move the agenda? Lyle moves. Okay, call for the question. Okay, it's Carrie Dunusley. And so now we'll move on to the previous minutes of council meeting, March 25th. Any questions, errors, or?
I'll move.
Okay. All right, so. All moves that are called question on paper, or so called questions or against. Okay, so it's Carrie Dunusley. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the waste correspondence. There's a letter there for the SEWA request for proposal for hosting the facility.
Now, that would be the county?
Yeah, yeah, we don't own any land that's close enough, but yet far enough. But it went to every municipality that belongs. So all 52 of us should have gotten this copy. Okay, so any questions on that one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next one. The letter sent to the, from the MD of Willow Creek, letter to the deputy minister.
This was very, very, very straight to the point, but they did send it out to all the municipalities in the area so that council was aware that they had sent this letter.
So this quarter leads in to the, sorry, one of the reports at the end.
Yeah.
Where it shows responses and fire responded when all the mess was available. So that's what that is.
And see, but this MD had permission to purchase an ambulance. And so if, and for a little bit, they had permission to even transport if the ambulance wasn't there. So as an example, if there was an ambulance, if we had this same agreement that was originally there here, if they drove to a person's place and then they had to transport a woman to the hospital, they still could. But legally, they can't now. And that's what they're trying to deal with is that they did have permission, but it's, it's kind of fallen through the cracks. And so they're, they're, you know, they're major concerns because there's major expenses to the municipality, even to us.
And this sounds actually quite similar to like for us trying to get CAD to CAD. You can talk to the AHS till you're blue in the face.
Yeah. So anyway, and it kind of sounds as though they spoke to the minister and they thought that they had it kind of corrected, but then it's back now. So they're dealing with the deputy minister, which theoretically, they don't change when the government changes or, you know, when you get a new minister, you still keep the same deputy ministry usually. And so I think that's partly why this letter is directed to, you know, to the deputy minister and not to, you know, the minister because potentially that position could change.
And it's right at election time.
Yeah. So any, any other questions on that one? Okay, well, we'll move on to self-girls. Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the workers' compensation board, National Day of Mourning.
We have this in our all seat, but the flag here, town office, it has asked for that already.
Okay, any questions on that? Yeah, hearing none, we'll move on to the next one, which is the National Public Works Week, May 19th to 25th.
What do we do to recognize our public's work? Like that would just be looking through the town?
Yeah, their public works department, yeah. Yeah, you can, you can make the proclamation if you'd like. If not, you can just receive it for information as well. Our public works group is very aware of how appreciated they are based on the feedback from council on a very regular basis, so.
Taking dogs.
I would think that we, we should publicly acknowledge them, I mean, for all the work they do outside. I mean, the common food, Tin Man, or all these other events. My opinion, I think.
Would you like something in a water bill? Newsletter?
Wait, he, newsletter?
You can do the simple proclamation.
Yeah, we can do the proclamation or, you know, like you said, we can also do it a different direction like Paul said and add something to our water bill that goes out every two months and. Yeah, so but it'll be.
If they're two months.
If you know, two months, but, or we can do this proclamation.
As I said, our, our public works, you guys, especially now we record the meetings, very open and volatile, you guys. And the appreciation of the work that they do.
We'd call them hydrofacts.
Well, maybe not in the newsletter because it's going to be after a couple months, but can we just have something written just to acknowledge and.
Just make a motion that administration send a letter on behalf of council to public works.
Sure.
Okay, so a lot of moves that we send a letter to the.
How about the public works staff?
We'll, we'll relate this to the, the, to this.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody else want a letter to go to?
Any questions or comments on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's Carrie Dunus. Okay, moving on to the letter from Martin Shields. Any question on that? Okay, if not, somebody wish to follow the correspondence? Still George Lee. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Okay, it's Carrie Dunus, thank you. Okay, moving on to policies, some policy or bylaw number 1481-19, local improvements.
These, these, both of bylaws for the 400 and 500 block. First, we're going to do the 400 block. We didn't, we've been doing all of our blocks separately. That way, it's easier to account for. You can see that from the original local improvement plan that was approved to the actual numbers that when the project was completed, we did have a substantial savings. So in drafting the bylaw, we included the savings. We followed the policy that no interest will be charged on this for the 25 years. And this is a local improvement bylaw, so it can read. And you've already done the advertising to the people and the acknowledgement for moving ahead with this project. So you can do all three readings this evening if you'd like.
All four, I mean?
About all three readings, you can introduce it.
Oh, okay.
You have to do the unanimous introduction.
Okay, so it's not a reading, I guess, when you?
Yeah, it's just a unanimous lead.
So from my understanding this, right, these people won't have to pay any interest on their street?
On the 25%, that's right. You guys changed that policy last year.
But the ones before them did.
No, no, you re-rolled those bylaws to change for all of them.
Thank you.
That's where the, even that we approved by the uniforms, we saved over $100,000 for interest to them. But it didn't get picked up by anybody, just the uniforms.
I remember that one, yeah.
So there is a substantial, if you look at it, substantial savings from what we kind of estimated to what it actually turned out to be. I mean, really, there was a.
Yeah, the overall project, the overall project was $680,000 was the estimated cost and the actual construction costs were $465,000, so.
So anyway, it was substantial savings to the taxpayers along there, so.
It did not come without a few headaches, though. I tried to give an overall summary and like I said, if you would like to consider all three readings, just a reminder that you have to have a unanimous consent to do your third reading. And so Karen already has the motions already pre-populated if you want to move forward with that.
Okay, so anyone wish to move the first reading? Paul? Any question on Paul's motion for the first reading? Hearing none, call the question. Okay, it's Carrie Dunusley, thank you. Okay, somebody wish to move the second reading? Paul? I'll pick Laura, so, okay. Laura moves second reading. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, call the question. And it's Carrie Dunus. Okay, introduction. Okay, George Lee. Any question on that? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Okay, it's Carrie Dunusley, and third reading.
Let's move.
Thank you, Lyle. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Sorry, call the question. I'll get it one of these days. Okay, it's Carrie Dunusley, thank you.
We, we only change 20 years of habit.
Okay, so now this is for the 500 block of bylaw number 1482-19 on Fourth Street. So it's similar to what Kim mentioned on the 400 block?
Same.
Same? Yes, so the, the savings were very similar. The, the annual amount ends up being the same, but that's just because there's a lot more frontage on the, on the 500 block, so. But the savings, the overall project was the same, you know, the outcome was $465,000 with the original cost estimated at $690,000.
Okay, so Paul moves first. Paul moves first, any question or comment on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Call the question. Got it, yeah. Okay, it's Carrie Dunusley, second reading. Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? I'll call the question. And it's Carrie Dunusley, introduction of the third. George Lee. Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's Carrie.
Carrie.
Carrie Dunusley, sorry.
It's Carrie, you're done.
No, no, it's Carrie Dunus. Okay, so introduction of the third. Lyle.
Lyle for third reading?
Sorry, Lyle's third reading, okay. One of these days I'll be great. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's Carrie Dunusley. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to current business. There's the golf course play and stay request.
So we've all had a chance to read the report. This was originally approved in 2017, but of course, they didn't take part in it. So they, we had to use one year's worth of information. So they did it in 2018, brought back, and they would like to continue with the, with the play and stay package. They did ask that we, just, and of course, this was from our feedback as well. Keeping track of it was a little bit difficult with, of course, the golf course booking, everything themselves. The guys were, they did more checking to see if they'd actually paid at the golf course, that sort of thing. So through the feedback of that, it was a lot easier that if, that we can identify the trailer in the spot as a play and stay package, they just mark them out down as occupied. We bring that stuff back in every day, and if there's, if it's occupied, we send a bill to the golf course for the month. And so talking to Gordon, he felt that that was, that was acceptable. Right now, they only have one spot booked. They have only asked for two. But based on that model, you know, this would allow them to do, our park allows for up to eight stalls to be used over, over a long-term basis, more than 14 days. So, you know, if it's a successful thing, it would, based on this model, would allow them to, to book more stalls if. And for the town, as you can see from the, what I wrote in the report, it's beneficial to us that, you know, to have those stalls filled because long-term camping in that, people tend to treat it like their home. So the vandalism and the washrooms, things like that tend to go down significantly when we have long-term people camping in there. So we put everything together with, if council is happy with that, the rate is exactly the same as what it was before. And the, one of the things that we did for is to direct administration to include the program rates in your annual fees rates, rates of fees by law, and that will allow it to be reviewed every year. So right now, it's at half of what a full rental of a stall would be if somebody was to command and pay per day. So based on that, they were happy with the price and, yeah. They're requesting council's permission to continue with the package. And by doing this, this will allow it so that it doesn't have to come back again. We'll just do it on an ongoing basis.
Okay, so Paul moves it. Any discussion or question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Okay, it's Carrie Dunus. Okay, moving on to the arena handicap parking.
We had a request, and it was actually right before they did the, their wind-up. There was a request, and you guys saw the report. A letter came in from Los Macala to the Curling Club asking for extra handicap parking. And of course, we look after the parking for those, for those, that parking lot. So the request needed to come to the town, so the Curling Club sent a formal request through letter. It only makes sense, there is only one handicap stall at the arena currently. So we talked to public works about it, simply painting lines, identifying those handicap stalls. Looked at the additional signing, signage for that is $195, so it falls well within our signing budget for the year. And everyone from recreation to public works through administration is in favor of that. And council is so inclined. We included a map of what it would look like as well. The only change that would really happen in there is we would bump, but currently, the police parking is the closest one to the building. We would bump back to the, to the far end of the handicap stalls.
Awesome. Michelle, do you have a question, Lyle?
I'm just, just going to ask. I know it doesn't happen often, but would there be a, a spot for ambulance?
They, we've got the fire lane that's always open and then the fire lane right in front of the building. It's always open for the ambulance. In, back when we had our own ambulances that attended the games, they parked.
Right by the door?
I don't know if you can see this door right here.
Oh, okay.
They, they used to park the ambulance right there. Funny enough, they were plugged in right there as well.
And the deputy captains would come into the janitor room?
Yeah, so.
Okay, any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's Carrie Dunusley. Okay, moving on to the Tin Man road closure. And permission for help and?
Yes, public works. We, we included this all as one motion. You can, council could split it out if you would like. It's exactly the same as the request from last year. So as, as one motion, George Lee.
Yeah. Because nothing's changed from last year, has it?
No.
Yeah, I don't think it's changed from most of the, from George Lee, so, I mean, it was pretty, they were pretty steady, stagnant with their, their, they're changing, but, which is kind of nice in a way, but.
Hey, I'm not, I'm not going to lie with this new program. There's a good chance that these are going to look the same from now on because we retain that information. It's simply a matter of putting the proposal together with their letter to council.
Okay, so any question on George Lee's motion?
Just because I'm right along the route there. Last year, there were some complaints from citizens. Frankly, in my opinion, citizens who should know better, that were verbally abusing some of our volunteers because they were being cut off. But this is an annual event that's been going on for years and years and on the same street. So, I mean, theoretically, they should know better, right? Is there, I know the morning or the evening before, there's people that go around and hand out brochures or anything. Is there anything other than standing it on people's foreheads to get them to remind them that that just going to be?
Well, it, it might not hurt us, to be honest with you, from the, from the town council or whatever, that we send a, a letter to each one of those affected residents and just say that, you know, we've had this request, it was approved at this meeting and, or stamp, timestamp if they want to hear the discussion or question on it.
And having said that, if it goes to the homeowners, like Lyle said, that's the, those are the ones that are aware of it because they get the information from the Tin Man. I believe the complaints come, came from a resident that was well outside of that area to get notification, so.
He was on the crescent.
Yeah.
And then maybe they should be included to know that.
So, yeah, and I guess that's the question, how wide?
How far, yeah, how big do we go?
Well, I, I think if you're maybe going to be boxed in from the, are restricted a little bit, maybe.
We may be able to ask our media partners to advertise our, what streets are closed.
Be smiling.
Yeah, well, anyway, yeah, but you do have a point, though. Sometimes it is nice to, you know, get something for the residents that live along it too, or the businesses, but, but again.
The Tin Man does do that.
But, but, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying. It is kind of hard sometimes for some of them to realize that, you know.
Because they've had a good group of volunteers and you hate to see them being abused for someone who's probably just having a bad day.
Right.
But I'd just like to give them some extra support so they can say, well, actually, the Tin Man supporters were around here last night and, yeah, maybe you received a letter in the mail from the town letting you know, so.
Okay, two.
Can I use a separate motion?
We, could I, no, we could, we could do something as a flyer for the, for the post office.
See, because what is this, it's April now, we'll, we'll have one word. Water bill before the Tin Man law, it won't come out until?
Middle of June.
I was just saying, you know, maybe we could put something in that as a blur too, but, but, you know, a flyer would cost us, what, a couple hundred bucks or 300 bucks?
If we did the town residents.
If we did all of them?
Yeah, it's 17 cents a coffee.
And then the bad thing about that is, are some people don't receive flyers either, so.
I guess there's no, there's no perfect solution other than walking up to every single door and someone's not going to be home eventually.
Well, then, the bad thing about too is, you know, if it's somebody else that's in a different area, is there another way that they can get out of their cul-de-sac or their area where they've been accustomed to turning left or going straight, and now they do have to turn right or left? I mean, I did traffic on the highway and, you know, I was sworn at, spin on, you know, fingered, told where to go and how to get there, more times than not, because from people that, just because they drove down Main Street to get to the UFA, couldn't figure out another way to figure out how to get to UFA. So I, we don't know how, how the best way. I, I think the people that live along that street, you know, I appreciate what the Tin Man does by going door to door, but, I mean.
And maybe this conversation could be highlighted in an article in the U.A. I, I see some nodding off-camera.
Okay, so anyway, so if that's agreeable, we, is there any other comments or? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's Carrie Dunus, thank you. Now, we will move on to the commercial development incentive application. So we do have an application here in front of us.
So because they don't own the building, this is a new business, new business license, and we're made aware of the business incentive and would like to take advantage of it to apply it to the rent there for the first little bit to get up and going. Fits completely within the parameters of the policy and, but because of it having a financial location, council asks to give final approval for this.
Mr. Chairman, I represent the landlord on this, but I do not represent the tenant. Do I have to sit over on this one, or?
No, because you don't, you don't have anything financially to gain from this, from this. This is an incentive in, within a policy of the town.
Okay, thank you for bringing that forward. Any questions or thoughts? If not, somebody wish to move this forward? Paul, thank you. Any questions on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And it's Carrie Dunus. Okay, moving on to the Home and Garden Show. So there were some questions brought up about the Home and Garden Show. So Karen's tried, or, sorry, Nancy's been trying to, to address some of these in a bit of a summary and discussion.
From an administrative standpoint, we took the feedback of some of the counselors that had asked about mileage and meals for the volunteers, and there was a conversation about counselors' remuneration for attending the Home and Garden Show as well. So what we did is put together the report, which obviously you've had a chance to read. There are some financial implications if you are to reimburse for meal costs and/or counselor remuneration. Based on that, this is an either-or kind of situation. You can receive this report for information, or if you would like to include this under the current policies that are in place, the travel and meal expenses for volunteers in the future would be T15. And if you would like to include remuneration for council as per year per diem, it would be policy 12. And of course, that needs council approval, so you can break that down into different motions if you'd like, or basically open it for discussion.
I know, I've also.
I was going to say, previously, we've had the travel and meals. Those expenses were okay, but would never be paid for.
Travel and meals were paid, it'd be quite a while, because I've never, ever received them in the eight or six years that I've been there, seven years, pretty?
You had to submit it to Nancy if you.
Six or seven years, so.
I never bothered either, but.
So, yeah, I'm not sure. Whatever, you had.
Yeah, like to get leave for mileage, I. Yeah, like, to get paid for mileage, I, I agree with that, with the mileage and, and maybe the meals. But, um, like, I don't, I, I don't mind volunteering for it, but I shouldn't have to pay to volunteer for it. So, if the mileage was covered and the meals were covered, I think that would be lots, in my opinion, but, um... But I think this thing should go maybe for the parades too. It shouldn't have to cost us, uh, mileage to go to a parade. Like, I can see not meals, cause the parade is what, maybe, that talks, what, two hours in that bridge or something? But just the gas, because a lot of us double up, like, very seldom one of us will drive by themselves. Like, we all go at least, at least two, if not four, to a vehicle. Four, but, but I don't think it should cost us money to go to these things. But we should volunteer our time to, does that make sense? That we should volunteer to be there as councillors, but it shouldn't cost us, like, the mileage to go there. That's just my thought.
Okay, Sean, your comment or...
I completely agree. I think part of doing this is volunteering your time for public events like that. At the same time, when it comes to something like Calgary, there's parking and, you know, alighting and that kinda stuff, especially with, you know, two people to a shift. So, sometimes, you know, there ends up being a lot of drivers.
And with two people to a shift, you're usually taking one vehicle. Nine times out of ten, unless the other person has to go somewhere or something afterwards.
And the calculation we used was, uh, the two people per shift riding together.
Yes, exactly, that I can see.
I, I agree with, uh, I'm fine with just mileage for the, for the Calgary Home Expo. You know, meals, I can take it or leave it, but we also have to take into consideration that we get a, a pass when we go there to volunteer. So, we can also, after or before our shift, go around and check out the Home Expo, which I found to be a bonus, especially when I take it with my wife, cause she's, I mean, that saves...
Was that a date or is it an anniversary group or a meeting or...
There's a birthday present.
I mean, she came in and helped and we were able to, to look around, I mean, that, I think that's a benefit too. I mean, we're, we're volunteering and we're also, it's nice to be around afterwards as well, so, I, I'm not in favor of having that.
One thing we're looking from an administration standpoint is just consistency to make sure we're, uh, that we're applying it things equally. So, you know, if, if the motion to be for staff volunteers and councillors participating for, uh, reimbursement of travel expenses, then that, you can split this out into whatever motions you would like. It's just making sure that it was consistent. We have had councillors in the past put in for their time and it was rather confusing on our end when something, something...
Yeah, and Kim and I had a bit of a discussion on this, on the travel, and I appreciate, you know, there are some events that we do go to that, um, you know, we do, um, you know, charge for mileage on, you know, as councillors. And, and some municipalities, and I appreciate they're a little bigger than, than ours, but have decided to purchase a vehicle or use a vehicle, an older vehicle that, you know, or whatever. And then it, it would go to all the functions that councillors would go to. So, the only bad thing about that is, is that, again, more or less what George Lee said, if there's two of you going or three of you going, then, you know, you pretty well have to use that. Or how do you break it up? If I go and say, oh geez, I wanna stop and visit with my kids after, you know, then how do you break it out and say, well, you know, or... I, I'm not sure. I know that there are some communities that have done that because of, you know, their costs of mileage has gotten to be... Now, the Home Garden Show is a little harder because you have two shifts in one day. How do you get back and get the vehicle so that they can go back and get the other, you know, it doesn't work. Um, and, you know, there's other events that, you know, wouldn't work on either. But, you know, there has been some communities that find that their mileage is, and it's getting to be more than what it would cost to own a public, sort of, vehicle.
Do you have another charger? I was at half when I got here and it just died.
We don't have another one, or, Paul, Paul, sorry. Anyway, so...
While you have the discussion, I...
Yeah.
I checked it before I left and I was at half.
Yeah, no...
I mean, I'll look forward to the motion that our time isn't paid, it's volunteer, hoping you get reimbursed for mileage and meals.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, do we wanna add in on that mileage for, like, going to a parade and, or is, is just the Home and Garden Show we're talking about?
Well, we can...
Just the Home and Garden Show.
Okay, well, we can either change the motion or keep it just for the Home Garden Show right now if you like and...
I think two parades is a separate motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so Michelle moves that we, uh, just pay for travel and meal expenses, sorry?
So, is, would it be the first portion of this, that council approved the reimbursement of travel and meal expenses as per policy T fifteen for staff volunteering, councillors participating in Calgary Home Garden Show events?
Yeah. That's what your motion is?
Exactly that, except without the...
Without the add.
Yeah, yes.
We'll, we'll amend it before we send the question.
Okay. Okay, so any other thoughts or questions on this, on this motion that Michelle proposed? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a question, it'll come up in a minute, no, it came up very fast, thank you, Karen.
That's why we do so much typing before.
Okay, well, it's Carrie DeNance unanimously. Now, we could add something in here right now, or if you wanna bring it back to another meet, meeting, um, about the parades or other special events that we...
We can, we can do if, if councils, if feelings of council through your discussion, as you feel that council, because parades will be, uh, for others as well, that we could include it in the travel policy for councillors and...
So, but, will we have to, we'll have to approve all the, each parade that comes up type thing, so let's say, you know, we...
If you include it in the policy, then anyone volunteering for the parades, uh, would be covered under that. So, we could look at it as a policy amendment, or if you, if you give us the opportunity to bring it back.
Is that, is that agreeable?
Yeah, just bring it back.
Okay, Michelle, do you have comments or...
Just a question in terms of, like, for volunteering, when you get that into, wouldn't that be an administrative nightmare, kind of?
Gets to be a little bit ugly, but of course, the parade is going to be more tied, the parade specifically is going to be tied more to the boat, uh, to the float. So, there is specific volunteers for the float and a lot of them do it as volunteers, so, uh, it's gonna open up a can of worms for the person that drives the float, the, that sort of thing. So, we really need to look at it, and that's why I, I feel that we should be given the opportunity to bring a policy, bring it back in policy, rather than to pay all the volunteers. Because that motion leaves it way too wide open to...
Do you think if, if council brings it back?
No, I think it's...
No, just say, no, this, this, this is something that I heard is a byproduct of the, uh, discussion, this other discussion. And so, uh, we'll, we'll just bring back some, uh, some pro, policy proposals for council's consideration at a future view.
Okay, sounds good, is that good? Not, you have a comment?
I just, I had a comment regarding the Home and Garden Expo. Uh, I got the knock that showed where we were supposed to be. It still took me a long time to find your booth to get there, cause it's got, Cory's himself, he's got... Would it be, I'm suggesting maybe for next year, could we somehow get like a helium balloon of this spaceship? So, people can see where we are, including me, so it's gonna be easier to find. Cause I mean, there's, there's ones with stuff up in the air and you tell them, oh, go to the whatever windows thing is up there. That's easier to slide, cause sometimes the, the numbers are not so much. But we can talk to Nancy about that, I think we have a line on where we can probably get one of those.
I can do some better.
Okay, good suggestion, thank you. Anything else on that one? Okay, if not, we will move on to the Porch Fest. Okay, so last year was very successful and this year, I kinda want to expand it a tiny little bit, I think, and...
Yeah, so the expansion on this year is, is last year, they, uh, had the stage pulled in, obviously, they had the pool and they had a very good crowd there. They're looking at, uh, having some food trucks involved this year. So, with that, uh, they are asking for the temporary closure of the parking stalls, uh, for the pool, which are on the five hundred block. But because there are, uh, it, it really doesn't affect a whole bunch, because of cour, of course, the, uh, there isn't a whole bunch of parking for pork trucks, cause most people are walking. But, uh, council's consideration for that. And one of the other things that they thought would be beneficial is to have the assistance of the community peace officer to be, uh, have his presence that evening. So, uh, for a little bit of patrol and to help if there is, uh, issues with parking on that block. So, uh, they've put the request together as, uh, as for both, but again, uh, if council would like to separate those into two motions here, more than one.
Okay, any thoughts or questions on that? Hearing none, somebody wish to move that? I'll pick tomorrow. Laura, please. Okay, any comments, question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Okay, it's Carrie DeNance, thank you. Okay, moving on to Spock Day's request. So, this is for the road closures. The map is wrong for the parade route. Well, it usually turns on Second Street and goes up...
And, and, and goes up, or past the post office and around, yes.
And, and partly, I, I think part of it was because last year, they altered it and then they've been altered it again, but, you know...
Yeah, we, we moved it because of the construction last year.
But then they altered it on the other end instead, so...
So, uh, we'll just reconfirm with them, um, the closure, so that they include Second Avenue. And the only reason that they can go up Second Avenue instead of First Avenue is, of course, that's a long, First Avenue, there's a lot of blank, walking in there. And Second Avenue includes the extended care, so it allows you to swing out.
And there's another thing about that one too, is it, it still allows some people, while the parade's on, to be able to go down that, to that corner and still participate, you know?
Still get out of town.
Still get out of town, so...
So, we'll just confirm with, uh, with Spock Days that their, their request is to include Second Avenue and not First Avenue, which I'm sure it is.
I'm sure it is too, but...
And there, there is a change for the Kitty Parade for just the length of Main Street as well.
Yeah, Kitty Parade's supposed to start in front of some pool area and just go down to the corner and stop at the...
Railroad tracks.
The railroad tracks, or there, I guess Rainbow Dersie is kinda too judging at the Kitty's Parade and then the kids can still watch the parade, is the theory.
Yeah, like you get them down into the solid park.
Yeah, that, that was the theory of why they, they, and they, they just were gonna do it prior to the parade, like, when the parade starts at ten, they would start off that at ten. And then by the time Kitty's Parade was done, the other parade would be right behind us, the theory of it. I thought it was kinda neat.
So, so with that, uh, we put the motions, uh, we don't have all of those street closures. We, uh, just approved the temporary street closures as presented, because then that follows the information that was provided for that date to accommodate the parade, Taste the Vulcan, and Tech Town performance of the two thousand nineteen Spock Days event.
Now, this is, this is, sorry, go ahead, George.
No, I was just gonna say, I'll, I'll make that motion if that works.
Okay, so George, any moves? Um, this is another one that we probably really should do something, I'm not sure how good Spock Days is letting all the businesses that know that there's street closure. So, it might be something good that we allow the...
There was two motions in council to close temporary, do street closures that...
So, maybe it's another where we have to...
Do some, do some public awareness of this, and then, again, we can do this, uh, through our Facebook page as well, and, and put that up there.
I have those great big maps at the store, you know, the big ones? I, we could highlight the routes on those that would take them to different businesses downtown too. Like, that would be quick and easy.
Yeah, I know, I know that some, Spock Days have tried to do some things, but unfortunately, they're, sometimes we kinda do things... I think the Tin Man is far better at doing some of the visiting the people.
Well, I'll do them up tomorrow at the store and put them up in the window.
That would be perfect. One of the things that is, Spock Day is, of course, always trying to keep things fresh, changes things from time to time. And that, in our community, is, is something that doesn't get received very well. It's, uh, you know, if you move the parade one block, it throws everybody off, how do, how do I get to UFA, how do I get downtown? So, when things change, it's just getting everybody into that, uh, it's...
And we, we will be seeing one from the Kinsman Club come, it's not on here too, isn't it? I didn't see it. The Kinsman Club will be wanting to close First Street North because they'll have the...
For the, uh, the boxcar.
Boxcar one.
Soap, soapbox.
Yeah, cause it was very successful last year on that weekend, so they are going to be doing the same thing, but anyway.
Yes.
So, um, George, any moves that we approve this request? Any comments, questions?
Temporary street closure.
If we're moving for the businesses and that, can we, maybe Michelle give it to you to give to the chamber to distribute to their membership, so that the businesses know?
Yeah, like, what we can do is we have a whole mailing list, so if there's electronic copy that's scanned, it'd be really easy just to, yup, shoot it right out to all the members and then it's covered.
I can get Cory to get ahold of you and then she can... Okay, thank you. Anything else on this one? If not, we'll call for a question. And it is Carrie DeNance, thank you. Okay, and then the next one is, uh, requests for facilities and...
So, this, this is a request for, uh, council to provide the, uh, facilities at no charge, baby ball lights, rodeo grounds. And with that, the request for the public works, for the, uh, assistance that they have traditionally provided in the past, uh, works out really well, actually, because for many years, the, uh, county did their barbecue the same day. So, they would do barbecue in the morning, they would use all the picnic tables, they would take them down to Main Street, and then they would deliver the picnic tables back to where the beer gardens went. So, then Public Works would help set up beer gardens, move the bars over, and then after the event, they would just move everything back. So, their, their request is the same, we're just hoping the county has their barbecue again. If, if not, we're gonna move fifteen picnic tables so we didn't do it in the past. But it's always been the request from Spock Days to have the picnic tables there. Just lucky enough to have a partner that wanted to move the picnic tables down.
I know that the, the bars might not have them this year, they're trying to work on something different. Same with, uh, the travel lights, they're trying to work on...
Different lighting? I know, I know a few years ago, we did, uh, give power to that other side, which really made a huge difference. We didn't have cords across the road, that sort of thing, which is...
So, they're slowly trying to get some of the, since now we have a C CAN that we've applied for, that, um, then we're trying to acquire some stuff that, that we don't have to borrow it from everybody again, but, anyway. So, this is similar to what we've asked, requested a lot previous years.
Yeah, so the recommendation is just a simple motion from council to approve the use of, uh, VMMP Park and Ball Diamonds and the assistance Public Works Department from Spock Days event.
Okay, so Laura's at... Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Oh, there it is, okay, it's Carrie DeNance. Okay, moving on to the lift, or the truck, I should say, not the lift truck, the flatbed and a vehicle to tow for the parade.
Yeah, actually, just a flatbed truck, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that it said...
Yeah, they, uh...
Oh, they changed it.
Yeah, they haven't, they didn't ask for the trailer. Oh, they, they did, the title's Truck and Flatbed, but the Flatbed and Truck for the event, okay, so... Sorry, the recommendation would be the Flatbed and Truck, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, that's close.
And this is, this beca, this comes from a request internal, because of course, the pool staff don't have Public Works vehicles, so, and of course, uh, they just want council's approval, uh, for Public Works to, uh, lend them a, a vehicle to drive to the parade. And, uh, with council approval, that covers off on our insurance and the things, that sort of, so...
So, this is for the truck and the trailer?
Truck and trailer, yes. Uh, we will amend that recommendation, uh, Public Works Flatbed... We will amend that recommendation, Public Works Flatbed and Truck.
When, when we give the, something like that, like when we approve that, you know, is there a town employee that drives the truck?
Yes, the pool staff are town employees. They're just temporary employees. But again, to cover it insurance wise for using a Public Works vehicle in a parade, that's why we do the council.
So it doesn't have to be one of our, our men from.
No, no. When, once you're employed by the town, you're covered through our insurance. That's why our summer students can drive our Public Works vehicles as well.
I'll make that.
Okay, so I'll lose this. Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Okay, it's Karen DeNance, thank you. Okay, moving on to the food bank. Well, never mind.
Yeah, to community reports.
Yeah, I'm sorry, community reports, yeah. So food bank, the minutes, draft minutes, January twenty-four. Any answer questions on that? George Lee has given us a update on prior. Okay, we'll move on to Mayor's and Reeves, February first. Anything in there that? Okay, they were approved at the last meeting, but there was one person's name that was missing, but I can't remember who it was. Anyway, moving on to Marcus Foundation. February twenty-sixth. Okay, no questions, we'll move on to FCSS on the draft minutes of February twenty-eight. Again, George Lee has given us an approval report on it. Okay, no questions to that, we'll move on to the Tourism Committee, March thirteenth meeting. Again, we've had a bit of a discussion on this, but is there any questions on the minutes?
Just want to point out that the minutes for the Tourism Recreation MPC are all in the same format now that the Town Council minutes are in. And they're available unapproved right out of the meetings on iCapus, the same as all the rest of our. So any town committee that we're responsible for, we're gonna be doing their minutes, not through the same method that we do regular council.
Okay, no questions, we'll move on to Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse.
It means just a name, name change in that one.
It's got a bit different letters, instead of V, C, 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 R.
Still a lovely R, R. Just, just to add some confusion to it.
Again, this one here, Michelle kind of highlighted, but any questions on any? Okay, hearing none, somebody wish to move community reports, right information? Okay, George Lee? Okay, any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Hearing DeNance. Okay, now we'll move on to counselor reports. Counselor Taylor.
Okay, went to a water meeting. Approved the audit. Approved, actually minutes from several meetings. Five operator reports, it's been a while. And there's one minor change in by law. Same day, went to Fresk. Audit report, and approve that. And that should be here, Kim.
Fresk's, not quite yet.
No, the audit report?
From Fresk, we haven't got that, we did get the water.
Okay, you should have, or at least a draft copy, any regardless. And Cypress County is officially joining Fresk May first, I believe it is. We lost, we can't ask, it gained with Cypress. And then we went into some questions about succession planning and compliance to the nine eleven standards checklist, which have to go through every two years. And that should be done. And then we all went down to Colledale. And let everybody talk, talk a bit about it. First started out, we all stood up and said who we were and what was exciting going ahead in our communities. And by and large, it seemed, I'd say probably half of the communities had something to do with cannabis or solar power. So they're gonna lay it up one way or the other. And then I'll let George Lee take the next section of that.
Okay.
And that's it, that's all I had.
Okay, any questions for Paul? Okay, moving on to George Lee, or just move it.
Um, yeah, actually, with the South Grove, I found it was more of a, a starting to get businesses. Like there was one lady that talked about garbage, how she'd worked for the city Calgary and she could implement better waste pickup in your town. She was kind of pushing her company to, to come in and give us quotes and stuff like that. And there was a fellow there, he was into fiber optic, which didn't relate to us either because we already have that. But he was trying to, he was the company that put it into waltz or something. And he was trying to get it, get people, yeah, Onet was the name of him. And that, so it wasn't, it wasn't quite what I expected, but we'll let Laura think if she can think of anything else I know. And then other than that, I also had the water plant. And FCSS, Jeanette has resigned as the secretary and Jen Form three is now the new secretary. So she said that we'll be getting our meetings in a lot more timely fashion. She's gonna start sending them out as unapproved instead of waiting for them to be approved to come. And that, so then with her gone, there was two positions available, the secretary and the vice chair. And Jen took secretary and I took vice chair on it. We're still working on hours for in there, like getting hours a bit more compatible to people that need to use that. So we're still working, trying to get them sorted out and get better hours. The appreciation barbecue for volunteers is April seventeenth at the CRC. I think it's at five o'clock, so everybody goes to it.
I think so too.
Uh, May tenth is the women's conference, women's conference. And they're still doing free income tax down there for anybody that needs it. And that of the last couple of days will be April tenth and seventeenth will be the last time they do any more free income tax returns. And then I also have the rec committee. And our C strategies will be here on Thursday at two o'clock. And we sit down with them, the rec board, and give them kind of our wish list of what we would like to see up at Virginia Mitchell Park. Like we all, we all have something different that we would like to see up there. So it kind of gives them a bit of a wish list. And then I think we're meeting with the other committees right after us, like anybody else that uses it up there on the same day. The Mega Bounce Run, only thirteen people so far is registered online. And they're looking for lots of volunteers for that. We need lots of volunteers to help do that that day. And, and that's July third and sixth. So we did the Ron Pelham Award the other day and we picked somebody for it, but we can't take because it's a surprise the night of the barbecue. And the committee's in Bloom organization, they, they have requested four benches for downtown. And the Vulcan Historical Society has requested one bench for the cemetery. We're gonna be putting up so. And that was, that was about it.
Okay, any questions for George Lee? That's the volunteer supper is on the seventeenth at five thirty.
What was it, five thirty?
That's what it says on.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was five or five thirty, it was for supper, so.
If you shop at five, you'll be there in time.
Sure, and you'll get a seat.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Magnus.
I had no meetings since our last council meeting. But just before coming here, I got an email from Shirley Pooley regarding the Golden Trail Tourism School happening on Saturday, April thirteenth, it's at the CRC. It's the first annual event, it goes on from ten AM to four PM. And it's free admission for everybody. It says there's something here for everyone, including business tourism, agriculture, innovation. There'll be door prizes, including a seventy inch smart TV, fifty fifty draw, two passes for Aspen Crossing, business consulting opportunity, Wi-Fi or internet hookup and one month's service, a Yeti camping pack, and, and more, there's space painting for the kids, food trucks. There's, it's gonna be interesting, especially for Vulcan. Like I say, it's its first annual, so it should be, I'm looking forward to see it. And the big news is that it's sold out.
Okay, wow.
Yeah.
I think it's forty boost, isn't it?
That I'm not, Michelle will be able to answer that.
I think it's a round there.
Yeah, I think it's forty.
Because they're not huge.
And the other thing is, I'm really glad that there's two political forums happening on Wednesday. I'd like to go to the, the one that they're having in the early afternoon at CCHS because I'd like to see what our young folk think of the stuff that's been going on during this political campaign. So I find that interesting. And that's at two, and then it's at seven AM for that.
Yeah, both of them are at the CRC.
Well, because if you read the advocate, it sounded like the one was at the CCHS school and the other one, we're not sure where it was at.
Oh, wait, the second one for sure is at the CRC. And I'm not even sure that the first one was still at the CRC, but it had, like the high school kids were hosting it.
Yeah, because that's not what, the way, the person that sent it in the advocate was. There's lots of people phoning me and questioning where that town, so.
And what time is it on the CRC?
Seven, seven.
Seven, that's on the Wednesday.
Yeah, seven to eight thirty. And I think the one at two just goes two to, to three, if I'm not mistaken, Michelle.
Uh, yeah, and that's gonna be hosted by the high school.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Thank you, Ms. Toss.
All I have this last two weeks was the South Grove. And I found it was the same, it was just presentations from companies that wanna get into your town to be able to, like garbage, Wi-Fi. But I do have a better understanding of South Grove and they are looking at changing their names. So it might be a little different before too long.
Okay. Any question for Laura? Okay, now we'll move on to Counselor Ody.
So just double check. And it is for the high school student school, they're at the CRC in the back of the high school. One at two PM, two to three PM is the first one, and seven to nine is the second one. Not crazy a lot for meeting wise, but a lot kind of going on in the background last two weeks. We had a chamber meeting on the twenty-seventh and thankfully with, with support, we're actually kind of threw together a political forum, which is great, it is a huge asset and incredibly important thing to have available for the community against trending areas. So that was really great that that came together. And definitely big thanks to everybody that kind of helped with that. That was a fairly big undertaking, fairly quick, that they did really well, just because we've got so many other things on the go. Supposed to be at South Grove, but unfortunately I had a family emergency. And this isn't committee related, but I sat down and just as a volunteer, working with Kim and these officer Gray, trying to get a bit of a process going for helping deal with like the feral and stray cats around town. And make sure they get to, you know, get them off the streets in really good, healthy, happy homes. So we're kind of gonna be, it's a bit tricky because we'll be dealing with multiple shelters in different areas. So I take a bit to kind of get all sorted out, but we started and I think it'll be really great for that. And thanks very much for Greg and Kim to, for helping so much and having such good support there. We're really, really fortunate, we're really fortunate to have all of the administrative and the youth officer that we do. So thank you guys for all of your continued hard work.
Okay, any questions from Michelle? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Mine, we've had two pool meetings. One was conceptual drawing of the building itself. And so we had an opportunity to look it over and discuss the pros and cons, the way they designed it. And then on last Friday, I wasn't able to come, but they had a teleconference and, and went over the, another conceptual drawing. So it's, it's really moving along quite rapidly, you know, to try and get to the point where we can send it out and get pricing on how much it's gonna cost to build the building and build the facility itself. But it does look pretty good. I was at Mayor's and Reeves on Friday. And yeah, there was one gentleman that was on the Mayor's and Reeves for years and years. His name's Tom Butler, he's from Millbrook, he passed away. So it had a bit of a moment of silence for him and, and a bit of a discussion of what they could do to recognize that, you know, he participated in Mayor's and Reeves for so many years. But one of the groups that came to it was, I think it's called Arches. Anyway, it's, there was a lady that came and spoke. If you're interested in it, I can send you her PowerPoint presentation. The numbers are just startling, they're just terrible, unbelievable, what the numbers that they're doing in the South Region for people that are hooked on opioids. It's just really, really sad. And they, they run the, this Arches runs the safe injection site in Left Bridge and all the stuff that's happened around it. But they believe that they've got a kind of semi handle on all the negativity stuff. But she says it's just unbelievable, the numbers that they're doing. It's just, it's really sad how the numbers have gone in the last few years of, it's in the southern zone. And so if you wanna, I can forward you the PowerPoint. I tried bringing it up on my phone, but unfortunately I can't. But the, the numbers are, are just really sad.
It'll be interesting.
Karen, Karen has it.
Okay, yeah, because it, yeah, I can send it up to anybody. It, it, the numbers are just, they're, they're just sad. I mean, and the only thing that I guess, you know, is a positive has come out of it is that some of the employees that they're hiring now at the facility are people that have gone through that process of getting themselves straightened out and cleaned up and getting their feet back underneath them. But it is, it is sad, like this lady really pushed that, you know, she could bring in twenty other clients into the room on any day and you wouldn't know who they were, you know, that they're just everyday, you know, you and me. And they're not generally the, the ones that we see on the corners of the streets or hiding under the bridges of people. But, and they think that the reason why Left Bridge is so bad right now is because, you know, Left Bridge, you know, is so much smaller, I mean, a hundred thousand people, a hundred and thirty thousand people compared to the city Calgary, the million. You know, the million, it's easier to fall into the, they, they hide into the system, shouldn't say hide, but fall into the system and not be there. Whereas Left Bridge, they, they show up and, and quite often, she really pushed that, is the people that have already ran out of all their luck. You know, and they don't have any luck left, you know, they have nowhere else to go. And they're just trying to get this. But it was sad, like the, the information was really, really, I mean, she was so positive, which is kind of neat to see on one hand as an employee, but you know, the information that came out was just, just sad. Anyway, that was probably the major thing. The second one was the information that came out from, John Barlow was there, even though he doesn't really represent many of the ones that are at Mayor's and Reeves anymore. But he was, and he really talked about the China and the Canola issue and how devastating it's gonna be to our. and how devastating it's gonna be to our farming communities. Because not only is China now closing up on the canola, they are questioning every commodity that they buy from Canada. And unfortunately, the way it looks at it at the moment is it's not related to facts, it's related to political. And that's the sad problem. So how can you compete against a political issue? So anyway, that was, I mean, our friend to the east, he sends us information all the time to, you know, tell us how, you know, he's trying to fight for us. But unfortunately, I think anything that's west of Ontario to the federal government is non-existent in their eyes. You know, nine thousand people are affected by, you know, one group, but yet, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand by the Royal Group in Alberta means nothing. And now the farming industry, it's really got that effect, you know, Manitoba, Saskatchewan, and Alberta the most. But anyway, other than that, those are the ones that I went to. And of course, you know, Spock days, I sit on their committee, and it's rolling along. But they're like every organization, we really rely on the support of the town staff and by class. And, you know, town staff does a lot for most of our organizations. And it is proceeding, and hopefully, it'll be a success. But again, if you're interested in volunteering to help, there is a volunteer list for a lot of the things that are going on that weekend. Other than that, that's pretty well for me, unless somebody's got some questions. If not, can I have somebody move the verbal reports, council reports? Laura? Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Here now, call the question. And Karen's analysis. Okay, now we'll move on to administration reports. So we'll start off with the activity.
You've all had an opportunity to read the action list. We did have some from October come off with the... For the change of title and the listing of the two lots that were recovered through taxation. We've got those listed now, the January for the closure of the development agreement. Everything else was from the last meeting.
Okay, any questions on the action list? If not, move on to the CEO report.
So again, you've all had a chance to read it, so I won't read it line for line. The highlights are, we've had a chance to... The guy's been working really hard on the float out at the Public Works yard. It was sent to... For sandblasting today. It has to be sandblasted, painted, and then decked. So it went for sandblasting today. They're hoping to have it back tomorrow afternoon. And they sent it a few miles out of town, and instead of pulling it like a trailer, they took it for a drive, so. So it made a trip down the road. And no, that's not a reason for the paper to go take a picture of it. They did it in cognitio, so... But yeah, no, it's running very well. It's going along really well, and they feel that, yeah, we'll get it in for paint and the decking right away. And then it'll start on the pretty, pretty stuff, the wrapping and banners, that sort of thing, so. But mechanically, it's good. They found a leak in the transmission, they've got it fixed up. The cables that were... The drive cable that they had issues with is fixed. And yeah, mechanically, it's coming along very well. The other notable, of course, was the pool design. And as Tom said, they've got us concept designs, the idea of what they're gonna do. Of course, we've been through this several times. They do the concept design, once everybody's happy with that concept, they send it out for pricing, then they come back, and then they start adding the details to it. So the details, maybe the important stuff, like mechanical, structural, all of those things. So every stage that they go through, the costing gets tighter and tighter and tighter. So right now, we get the design done, they're going, we're gonna be next week to approve that design to go get the cost analysis done. They bring that cost analysis back, and it's gonna be a range of this and this, with plus or minus. I think at the beginning, it's like twenty percent, so it's huge. And then as you add mechanical features, then that's where they get a lot more accurate, is what kind of filtration, what kind of, you know, that sort of stuff. And we'll continue, and there's four stages of that, so we'll keep counsel up to date on where we're at in that process as it goes along. And volunteers are doing a really good, you know, volunteers, stewards, and they're all paid. But we, you know, there's a lot of interest in it from internal to make sure that we get this done right. So everybody's taking the time, we don't have very many people miss meetings. I know Tom had Mayor's and Reeves, but he was good enough to come in in the morning, provide his feedback so that we could actually break that two meeting in the afternoon, so. And I know everybody appreciates that. The... Yeah. Majority of the other is, again, I worked with Michelle and Greg. Because the Heaven Can Wait doesn't have the same capacity that they did when they first brought the cat network things forward. Greg's starting to put out cat traps, because again, it's spraying the out requests for them. According to our policy, they were... The cats were brought back here and then sent to Heaven Can Wait. Heaven Can Wait says they can't accommodate that anymore, so we're kind of coming up with a plan of how we do that. As Michelle said in her report, we're gonna be working with lots of different facilities to make that happen. So far, we've only had one cat brought in, so. We want to make sure that if we need to change policy, we will, and we'll bring that to council if something's needed. Hopefully, the organizations we're working with will be able to deal with what we're dealing with. Again, with the... With three counselors to discuss some concerns that were brought forward from public about tourism. Basic, yeah, the basic conversation with that was concerns over how the operation went the last time we opened and making sure that we don't make those stumble on the same points again the second time. That falls into the staffing portion of it. We do have the visitor service advisors are now working their regular shifts in Soul building. Because we are in the shoulder season, it's open from nine o'clock until four thirty every day. I was in on the weekend. They... Things were a little bit slow on Saturday, but Rita said they had a pretty steady crowd through there on Sunday, which was nice, so. Yeah, they're both... I had a conversation with both of them today, and they're still very positive about it. Yeah, it's been going very well. So the meetings of interest, of course, Tom mentioned HDR Tango, which is the whole design. And then Karen and I said goodbye to our implementation specialist that we've had for iCompass for the last year and a half of that. So she's now done doing all of her free work for us. She... Baby was great to work with, so. And we feel that we've got our system up where we can get around. Again, there's a help desk that we can contact all the time, but we lose our dedicated, our dedicated resource, so. But she confidently feels that we know our way around the system, so. I've... I mentioned, Indiana here is still dealing with the CPO complaint. I filed the final paperwork with Solicitor General, and through that, there was five allegations made against our... Sorry, four, two of them were the same. And from that, the three of them were found to have... You have to use the exact wording when you report it, but they were unfounded, is the wording. And then one was found to have merit in part, and part of that was through that. If you find anything that has merit, you have to have a disciplinary action, and disciplinary action. We could go in camera if you want more detail, but it was a verbal one. It has been submitted to Soul Gen, and unless it's appealed, we won't hear anything back about it. So that should conclude that portion, so.
Good.
So, and that's essentially my report. Last council, any questions here?
Okay, no questions, we'll move on to the development officers. When it gets to building permits, there was a question on why this person had to go through quite a few hoops in their opinion on the solar panels. And I just tried to explain to them, like, they phoned me and I... Or phone Nancy and I phoned back to them and explained to them why the process is the way it is. Unfortunately, we have a community that's not too far from us that didn't have a policy. Now they have seventy solar panels in one guy's backyard, all sitting on the ground, because they don't have a policy. And they kind of wish that they would have at least had something similar to what we have or not. And unfortunately, that's the problem with policies and bylaws, is generally, they're created because somebody does something that's not generally in the norm. And then it creates issues for people that want to do it in the norm.
Actually, he phoned me.
Oh, did he?
And we had a very good conversation.
Yeah, I had a great conversation with him too, unfortunately. But I mean, but unfortunately, you know, sometimes the salespeople say, well, yeah, but over in, you know, Community A or Community B can do this without following the rules, or, you know, there is no rules, you know. And the big thing was is that he was getting a government grant, you know. If the government approves it, then we should approve it too. But unfortunately, you know, it's a different philosophies. But anyway, it was, long story short, it's gone through. He was kind of worried that it would fall through, but... But I mean, I know that sometimes you hear back from people, and they question why we have it, but usually it's because somebody's done something.
He should be live live this week.
Yeah, so it'll be good, but anyway. So any questions on any of the ones else for Nancy's? Okay, here and then, we'll move on to the public works.
In addition to Stu's for the public works, they just wanted to mention that the Waste Authority has surplus vehicles that they're... They're not using for pickup anymore, but they still have some useful life in them. So Dick has done a proposal for their board for the possibility of using the vehicles within municipalities so that they're available in case one of their trucks breaks down, if there'd be a truck available. We've done that in the past, where our old garbage truck, if something happened out there, we just, they can't afford it. Of course, it's past its useful life, it hasn't run in three years now, so. They're in the process of public works working with the Waste Authority for their surplus vehicle to be parked at the public workshop to be available. And the idea with it is if, and this, again, well, is not written in stone by any means, but the discussion alongside that is the Waste Authority replace their truck every five years, town will come and get that truck to keep it available for... So we would have a ten-year-old vehicle, because they have two, and then we would run it for five years until they get another one. That one would come out, and then we'd work with the villages to see if anyone else wants. So we'd allow the town to have, being that this is their biggest route, they would have a standby ten-year-old vehicle available in our community, and all the villages would approximately have a fifteen-year-old, if the plan comes together for them, so. It's preliminary right now, but of course, I wanted to make you aware of it because they did take the one truck out there, and the public works was using it today. So if somebody stops you on the street and says, when did the town buy any garbage truck for cleaning out ball dryers? It's the Waste Authority's old trucks, so.
Okay, any other?
Just, we're talking about pothole patching. Is the spot there just beside the pool, is that gonna be included where everybody kind of goes around?
Oh, that's not a pothole.
No, that won't be a pothole patching. That will be done with actual, the hot mix when we do our regular patchings. Yeah, yeah, our pothole patch doesn't work on whole something.
Yeah, I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, no, it is on the agenda for them to do that, but it's a different category.
Yeah, it will be regular hot patchings. We use that, we use an actual asphalt product, not a cold mix.
Anything else? You know, and again, with what Lyle said earlier, you know, it says on the very bottom, it says, other public workers are working on the float and also working on getting quotes for painting and wrapping. You know, they really do need a major pad on the back, they have really picked up. And I think once you see it, when it's all painted, you'll be really impressed with what it looks like. And I think they've come a long way and done a lot of work. And again, I think there's kudos to our public work staff for what they do for our community. Okay, any other comments or questions on Stu's? Okay, if not, we'll move on to community services.
And no, Bonnie's the new recreation guide has arrived, and they were sent out, I believe, a good portion of them were, put mail.
I noticed your son got on the cover, you didn't.
No, no. That's a... That's not a bad thing. That picture of him with the Klingons, if you look at the inspection on his face, it explains a lot. He certainly enjoyed their company, but they scared him a little bit.
Well, given his age, he did very well.
On that, the one for Bonnie that's in... And Georgie spoke on that too, about the RC strategies, they're coming, and they're gonna have those two meetings. Will council get a kick out of that prior to it going to, or will, should we attend one of those two meetings?
It was the Recreation Committee one, and then I think that council will be... For everyone else, basically, they're gonna do the user groups, and then I believe a public engagement.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure, because, you know.
And when should council attend?
Yeah, like, I mean, again, too, yeah, I mean, I know that the Rec, you know, committee has, I'm sure has some great ideas and input too, but there might be somebody on council that might, that isn't gonna be invited to the user group one either, so. Okay, anything else on any of those? Okay, we'll move on to... Let's move from Bonnie's over to the CPOs. That, the sign that's, digital sign that's on Memorial, is that ours or is that the RCMP's?
Memorial?
Yeah, it's on wheels.
That'd be the RCMP's.
Oh, okay.
Or, I better not... I'm not sure if the county bought one.
Oh, okay.
Because I did see one in Kirkcaldy the other day.
Yeah, but the RCMP one goes around all over too, so I'm not sure.
I'm not, the one, there was one, and I'm not sure if the county got one.
Oh, okay.
Because there was one at the entrance of Kirkcaldy the other days.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, that's good.
But ours, no, ours are whole mountains.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, I just thought, oh, maybe they... I was over in Nanton today, and they just had theirs attached to a pole, and they had six bags.
Of sand.
I thought, hmm, somebody's gonna want that sign one of these days, because it would be really easy to capture. Whereas the one that was on Memorial had a...
Big trailer.
It wasn't a big trailer, it's about the size of this, but it had a chain on it, and it was locked up pretty good, so I thought.
Actually, one way to stop anybody stealing the trailer, take one of the wheels off.
Yeah, they... Yeah, they do that a lot on those directional signage ones too, but anyway, I just saw it and I wasn't sure whether, whose it was.
Yes, Greg actually had both of our signs in the other day, downloaded the information off of them and make sure, give them a good clean up and go charge up the backup. We did buy an extra set of batteries for them, so we can swap them with the people. People will say that they're not working all the time. We can program when they come on, when they come off, based on trying to get specific data. We want it to run from this time to this time, see what the traffic counts and speeds are during those particular times, because it also helps us schedule our time out there as well.
And even when they're not on, they're on?
Absolutely.
Well, I definitely think that they've been an asset, you know, especially on, on F thirty-four on your neck of the woods, I think they've been.
I watched the speeds come down and it's not perfect, you don't want your perfection.
It definitely, I think, has helped, so I think it was a good investment for the community to put in.
Speaking of signs, a Porstop sign at the entrance at the time, is that the government?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's Porstop.
Because every time they go by, there's, oh, there's a new one in place that comes by, there's a little operating that's.
Yeah, yeah, once they do that entrance, it might change, you know. Unfortunately, what it is generally is larger vehicles that.
Back duals on superbees is what it catches.
They turn and they catch it, but, but, you know, some of them must be getting a pretty good always on the side of their trailers, hitting that sign, 'cause I'm sure it must.
It's a six by four post and it's buried in the ground three feet, so.
But it is, there is talk of an island device or something, well, we used to have it in a barrel.
Yeah, we'd just go stand the barrel up, but trust me, doing that fifteen times a week is not the greatest job.
One of the, one of the mares that we've had in our community didn't like the barrels, so that's why they went back to the post method, but.
It was easier to fix than, than the barrel.
But anyway, but anyway, I know that they have talked about doing something more legitimately permanent, but again, if they do, unfortunately, there'll be some vehicles that'll get major always, you know, instead of just a little.
Transportation has a whole criteria for stuff that butts up against their, whether, you know, if it's concrete, it has to be a certain profile and can.
Yeah, and unfortunately, that's why, you know, like even on that, you know, our guys do go out and try and clean some of the sand, but, you know, some of it is theirs and they don't really want you going onto the road unless you've got, you know, people flagging and homework, so. So our guys kinda go up around there, but it doesn't get as good, 'cause really, we're on there.
I saw they were cleaning up around there today, does that mean, was it just cleaning or are they gonna start working?
We've been, the public works has been out with the street sweeper all of last week and what they're gonna continue on, I think, most of the residential, at least one pass.
Well, I mean, at that, at the entrance, Porstop was out there with.
Both Porstops doing theirs as well, okay, yeah, I know.
But I'm not sure when they're, have you heard anything on them starting?
No.
I know the signs are up for the bridge at Carmengate, but. Okay, anything else, sorry, we kinda got off Greg's, but anything else on his report? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the fire chiefs. So there is, when we were talking about earlier, you know, for month of March, you know, the town, you know, for medical assists was eight and three for the rules, so that would have been eleven. And then first response, when there's no EMS in town, there's four. So there's the area that the other municipalities is questioning, is, is super high for them, so.
So if someone is injured or ill and the fire department goes, responds to it, they can't transport that person?
No.
They gotta wait for an ambulance.
Right. And I believe if you follow the rules right, they can't even recommend that you get into your car and drive. They can't even recommend that, you know, right? Some, how imply it, but they can't.
Right, you decide to get into your vehicle on your own, there's nothing to stop you.
That's correct.
But that's rather like, if you pull over in the shoulder to let somebody go by, and there's an accident, you're a fall. Because you're directing traffic by pulling over.
Okay, so any, any questions on any of Peter's report?
How are we, how are we coming on catching the arsonist? Suspected arsonist.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions? Okay, if not, somebody wish to file administrative reports? Lyle? Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing now. Pardon?
You called the question?
Well, yeah, I will, if there's no questions on Lyle's motion, we'll call the question. Thank you. And it's Karen DeNance, thank you.
Only because they could.
Pardon?
Only because they could.
Oh, okay, not a problem, okay, there's no notice of motion, so we'll move on to adjournment. Michelle, all in favor? It's Karen. Thank you very much. And we are offline.
Not yet.
Offline. Okay, sounds good, thank you very much, and.